Education, and I recognize Board Member Lautermilch to lead us in our pledge.
Please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member Lautermilch. At this time, I would entertain a motion regarding approval of the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Ryan, second by Board Member Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time pursuant to General Statute 115(c) five-one, we will open up public comment, and no, no one has signed up for public comment. Okay. Item two is the consent agenda you have before you, and I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
May I approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Board Member Ryan, second by Board Member Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item three is reports, and at this time, I recognize Mr. Campbell, Maintenance Director, and he will provide us a maintenance update.
Good evening, Board Members. Chairman Odom, Dr. Hefner. I promise I'm gonna be quick. Everybody told me that I have five minutes, so I'm gonna be real close to that. Just for a few things, like I always do, I like to recognize my staff. We increased from six members this year of staff to seven, which has been a blessing. Thank y'all for that. We have five alumni from Alexander County Schools, and combined with all seven of us, we have, they have a hundred and one years of experience with Alexander County School. So pretty much, we are Alexander County.
Chris, hang on just a moment. Are you operating your slides or is someone else?
I'm sorry.
There we go, there we go.
If you'll do it, that will be better for me.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you, thanks.
So, moving on to one more. So, last year, just to give you a comparison, maintenance requests, last year, we had thirteen hundred and sixty-one total work orders. At the time of my presentation last year, we had seventy-two open work orders with a completion print percentage of ninety-four point eight. That was an average of two hundred and twenty-seven per staff member. This year, we've had fifteen hundred and seventy-eight work orders, and these are work orders that the, the principals turn in. There are a lot of work orders that my guys just take care of. They've got a whole list that I have not entered, a stuff that they, they take care of when they're in a building. But we had fifteen hundred and seventy-eight work orders turned in, sixty-two, we only have sixty-two open work orders. That's a completion print percentage of ninety-six point one, and two hundred and seventeen per staff member. And that number is kind of skewed, I'm gonna tell you, because there were three months that we only had five workers, and with COVID, there were several times, so it's kind of a little less, but now that we have seven, so it's going down. So, I'm pretty sure it's over that two hundred and seventeen, but when you divide it by seven, that's, that's what it comes up to there. Next slide. So, summer projects, we focused a lot of that on Alexander Central High School this year, because it was in need of some repairs. Flooring, we removed two layers of flooring, which was existing carpet, in thirteen classrooms, and we had the asbestos, well, it was guidance offices, CTE office, and then the assistant principal's office, SRO's office, had been flooded from the rain we had. We removed all of that, and then we had to abate the asbestos tile that was underneath it. We installed LVT flooring in all of those areas, the thirteen classrooms. Furniture, there was three business classrooms, purchased new furniture for them to bring in more modern and make it more acceptable to the computers. The JV gym floor, to meet lighting required requirements in there, we sanded it completely down, repainted it to match the varsity gym, which gave it a complete new look. Painting, we painted fifteen classrooms, the CTE offices, other offices, and several hallways that needed to be painted. Next. And the next slide is just some pictures. You can see the new furniture in the top, the picture on the top left, some of the offices with new furniture, with new flooring and paint is the second one, and then a picture of the JV gym. Which that just did really a whole lot there. But we'll keep moving. Uh-oh. I added one, one extra right there. Alexander County Schools. This is just for the overall things of other stuff we've done this summer. We've painted at East, West, Sugarloaf, Hidnite, Bethlehem, several classrooms, hallways, other places, offices. Equipment, we purchased a UZ return mower for Sugarloaf. That now means that every school has a brand UZ return mower within the last three years, which is, helps the custodians get the job done a whole lot faster. Gym floors, they screened and recoded the floors at Ellendale, Taylorsville, Wittenburg, East and West, which is, we haven't done in a couple of years because of COVID, there was no, no real need. Offices, this year and the past year, we completely renovated the offices at Taylorsville Elementary School. And then we replaced the fire alarm system at Stony Point Elementary School, which was our oldest fire alarm system. Safety grant, this year, we applied for the safety grant, and it was a little over forty, forty-five thousand dollars. We put, we finished putting window coverings at some of our most critical points. We're planning on applying for some of that again to complete that project, but we tried to get the most critical windows where you could see the kids from the road. There's still something to do, but we completed, we did a little bit of Sugarloaf, that should have been Stony Point on there, I'm sorry. I put Sugarloaf, but we did do some inside, but Stony Point, Hidnite, and Taylorsville were the ones that we did this year. Other things, we, we continue to put vape detectors in the, in the schools to identify the vape detectors. We put six new vape detectors in the high school, which brings the total to thirteen now at the high school. Installed two at East and two at West. The vape detectors, they can test not only vape, but they test smoke, they test aggression, they can test gunshots, and, and several other things. There's a massive list on that.
What do you mean by aggression? Sorry?
So like, so like if light breaks out, they can sense the, the height and noise and the, sense it in that, and it's, it's been proven to work, so. They're not just for vape, they do a lot more than just the vape.
And it can also detect THC
THC.
in vape smoke. So that takes it to a different level than, than just your typical vaping.
There's a, I can, I can share with y'all the whole list, but it's got a whole list of everything that it can detect and set up, and it's, it's real time, so the, the SRO, the principals, this is, all of them get a text on their phone when it goes off. So it doesn't set an alarm off in the, in the bathroom, it's kind of a silent alarm, so they get a text when it comes, when something's going on directly to their phone. Did I answer that question?
Yeah, I just hope you didn't put one in here before board views.
Did not. Next slide. So this year, we applied for five niche-based public school capital fund grants. We applied for a new gym and office area at Sugarloaf Elementary School, a complete roof replacement at Bethlehem Elementary School, and then, I must have done this at a time, it's not a new gym and office, it's a new HVAC system at West, Taylorsville, and Alexander Central. Well, I apologize for the mistakes in my typos there. Multitasking didn't go too well. We received the grant, one point three five million dollars for Bethlehem's roof replacement, and we have to, we have to have a five percent match, Chairman, that's from the county grant, or from, from local funds. So, then the next slide, we get to re, back up one more. So, I did that again on there, cutting and pasting. But, this year, you get to, you could reapply for the same grants, or change the grants, but you don't have to reapply. What they did last year is they ranked them in order from, there was over four hundred, five hundred applications in the state last year, and they funded a hundred and forty-two of them. And so they ranked the ones that were left over from last year, and those are still ranked. So if we amend them or change them, they can be rerank, go higher, go lower, whatever, depending on that. So, the, the ones that we're gonna leave as is, as of right now, is Sugarloaf Gym and Office, and then the HVAC at Taylorsville West and ACHS. So that's where that, that is. Also this year, something that was new, happened last year with the new budget, was the Public School Building Repair and Renovation Fund. The state gave us three hundred thousand dollars for twenty-one, twenty-two, and five hundred thousand for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that can only be used for renovation and repair of educational, things that affect students' education, classrooms, gymnasiums, stuff that's gonna directly affect, it cannot be used for offices, central offices, it cannot be used for athletics, it cannot be used for anything like that. So some of the stuff that we did at the high school this year involved some of that money.
That, that's what I was gonna ask you. Is any of that, how much of that is left?
So, I think we applied this past time for a hundred and ninety thousand of the first three hundred thousand.
Okay. And then the five hundred thousand is brand new?
Okay.
Yeah, and they award that quarterly. So the five hundred thousand is not immediately in there right now, so they, they divided it by four, and they give you a percentage of that quarterly.
Okay.
But it, there's carryover, so you don't have to, you didn't have to have it spent all by June thirtieth.
Okay.
And that is, that's why I add, except for, like I always say, our custodians are awesome. The, the amount of time that they put in getting the buildings ready and working during the summer, I, I would always be remiss if I did not say how much, that I appreciate them, because they, they have the schools, they're not all complete, but our schools are looking amazing. And so, I, I always like to give a shout out to the custodian.
I have a question about the, the carryover application. Has there been any discussion such as these, the four items that's on that list? As far as, are we waiting on grant money? Are we, has there been any discussions with the facilities, what we're gonna do with, with these, if the grant doesn't come in?
I think Scott's gonna give you an update in the facilities committee, so I will let him do that. We did meet.
Okay.
But, I know that the grants were ranked, I think it was twenty-four. They haven't told me yet which ones were ranked where, but the leftover grants were ranked twenty-four, twenty-seven, seventy-two, and one fourteen from last year, and so we've got two that are in the top twenty-five, or twenty, yeah, top twenty-seven, around there. So, I'm hoping that they get back to me and tell me which ones those are.
Is there a timeframe that they'll get back with you, or?
I, I don't, I emailed them, the applications this year, the new applications are due September first.
Okay.
And so, I'm hoping that we, we get some more. The, the one point three five million for Bethlehem was very much needed. Our goal is to have that project done next summer, because it's gonna be a complete tear off, and I, I, we can't do stuff like that when the kids are in there. We didn't have time to prepare for the summer of this year.
Any other questions of Mr. Campbell?
Are you, or is Scott, sorry, I might be premature, gonna discuss the county grants that they got for the tennis courts?
Oh, I can, I, I should have put that in there. So the tennis courts, we, we got three hundred and, can't remember, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the tennis courts, and three hundred thousand dollars for the track repair. So with the, the discussion, I was taking over this, discussion on the track, we have put that on hold right now because of the facilities discussions out there. We did recode it, and they're gonna continue to recode it and put some pairs, because that's the cheap price right now. Those funds carry over, there's no time limit on that, but in case something else is decided to do to the stadium, I didn't want to put that money in there and then have to tear it back out. The tennis courts, we sent out for bid. We sent bids out to five different companies. Only one returned a bid, so we're trying to see what our options there, or whether or not to proceed with just the one bid, if we can proceed with the one bid, or we have to rebid it out. That project would not start till, with the one company, would not start till the middle of October, because he's gotta get the materials in. So at that point, with October fifteenth, the end of, end of season, and they're, they're starting tennis, I don't think we could get it done.
And would you tell the entire group, Chris, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, what that will include, and then of course, what we will choose to do as far as some, some additional sidewalks and such?
Yes, ma'am. So the tennis courts would, would include going through and the existing asphalt that's on top of them, sawing it down, repairing it, patching it, and then, there's a system where they'll come in with a pro bounce system, which is, they coated with basically an indoor-outdoor carpet, and then they put a, after patching it, and they put a, it's kind of a polyurethane material, heavy-duty over top of it, and then they paint it and put the lines on it. It includes new nets, painting the existing light poles that are out there, we already upgraded to LED, and new fencing is what we would get covered with the grant for that. The bid come in, three hundred and forty-one thousand, the grant was three hundred and thirty, and then, when we do the renovations like this, we'll have to do some, um,
ADA.
ADA compliance with that. So we, what we would put in would be new sidewalks, a shelter for them to get under in case it rains, and then a ramp and sidewalks to get down to the lower courts in case someone with a wheelchair, make it wheelchair accessible for that.
Thank you for what you do, what your staff does. I just, I have a couple of, of quick questions. Those work orders sounded awful high. Sounded like a lot, sounded like people doing a lot of stuff. Is most of the work orders like small things, or is, is, and, and what can you do to maybe mitigate some of that? Is there anything that can be done? This sounds to me like you're getting a, you have to do an awful lot of work orders.
Majority of our work orders are plumbing, which, everybody knows we went through the tick-tock challenge this year, and kids flushing bottles, and you have to tear out a hole to let go and stuff like that, flush valves breaking, pipes busting, sewers getting backed up constantly, and then HVAC. Our HVAC systems are getting old, that's why we're replacing those. Right after July one, I ordered eight motors, and I think since July one, I have ordered seventeen motors now. We have constant fighting with HVAC. Mr. Robinson can attest to that, that's been going on for quite a while. But, the simple work orders, I'll be honest with you, the simple work orders, I try to go out and do myself. I try to relieve some of that of them, but there's lighting issues, electrical issues. There are a lot of moving furniture, desks and stuff that we take care of, but most of the orders, they're, they're pretty substantial, and a lot of those work orders take three, four, five days. And then getting parts has been a nightmare.
And, I, you may or may not know, we had talked, we'd spoken earlier about the handicap accessible playground at East. Is there any update on that right now? Are we still waiting on grants for that, or?
I have no update on that right now. We, we haven't had a discussion with the, I was talking with Dr. Hilton about that, and with the new change over there, I have not had that discussion, Dr. Hefner and Jessica yet. So we probably need to follow up on that.
And what about the part, the, East, the driveway, the road?
I would like to share that. So, we met, I think in two thousand nineteen, with DOT, not our local DOT, but some of the state representatives, to look at a way of getting the parking off of the road at White Plains Road at East, to get more cars into the driveway, because car rider line is a nightmare there. We fixed the Bethlehem problem, that is great, and then West, blocking one twenty-seven in the afternoon. So the DOT, I got a text in June that they were going to widen the entry at East so that we could have two lanes coming in for car rider line and one lane exiting, and they have done that. They widened it, they paid for it. They, they've done it, and I really think it's gonna get a lot more cars in, a lot more cars quickly. I cannot remember our plan at West, but they did go in the backside of West, and they paved a wraparound driveway, if you're familiar with where the track is, to where you can drive around, and I've gotta go up and, we met, we talked about it this afternoon, about going up and developing a plan there to try to get more cars off the road using that, and figure out how to get the buses in. But I am very appreciative of the DOT for doing it, because I, I really didn't have to do anything with that.
Yeah, I, I, I just rode by there and saw they had some new pavement, and I didn't know that, that they were completely finished with that, so I didn't know. But I appreciate that, and if you would please, or I can do it, either one, we need to just follow up on this, this playground down there, because I think that is so beneficial for, for those students down there. And I know it was kind of in the process, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of changes and moving parts since that's, since we've had that discussed, discussion the first time, so, thank you.
Has the new paving at East, has it already been marked?
I'm not sure if it's been marked. I have not been there this week. It had not been marked at the end of last week.
Yeah, it was in the, in the wind, like yesterday.
They, they might be waiting. So they kind of waited and got West ready, and finished the paving at East and West at the same time. I guess it's because of mobilizing crews. They might be waiting. I think they were paving yesterday at West. They might be, just be waiting to line and go do it all at one time. But that's gonna have to be done, because that will be a nightmare.
Any other questions of Mr. Campbell?
Thank you for what you and your staff, and like you said, all the custodians. Them summer months are some hard months, a lot of furniture being moved, a lot of upgrades, and I was gonna ask you if you's having problems getting everything ready to go because of getting supplies, but it sounds like you are. With like your parts, because it's, it's a nightmare right now.
It, it is still, I'm hoping that it'll recover, but some things, we, we have a compressor ordered four weeks ago for West, and it's not coming. But my, I, I will say, my staff makes me look good, so I'm very appreciative of them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Betsy Curry for our twenty twenty-two comprehensive needs assessment.
Good evening, Chairman Odom, Dr. Hefner, members of the board. I bring to you tonight the Alexander County Schools twenty twenty-two comprehensive needs assessment. As you'll see in a few minutes, this is not exactly complete, because we don't have all of our data, but I have some good data for you, and you'll probably be grateful that I split it up into two sessions by the time I'm done. Marking Dr. Chlor. Oh, there we go. Did you do that, or did I? Okay. So tonight, the data that we'll, we'll examine is the multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, and it will look at implementation data, and that is how well are we implementing this process? We'll look at student achievement data when the state board approves it, because it's not official at this time. We'll look at some attendance data, some discipline data, and of special interest to you was the personnel data, because we're struggling as a state, and certainly as Alexander County Schools, in retaining people. So we want to look at retention data, North Carolina teacher working survey results, exit interview analysis, and teacher and administrator supplement. I can tell you now that we could not access administrator supplements. Dr. Chlor was able to find something from twenty twenty, but we kind of feel like that may have changed. So rather than give you inaccurate information, that part will be blank also, and we'll share that at another time. Okay, next slide, please. So when we're talking about the multi-tiered system of support, we have two assessments that we are given, and that we complete as a district. One of them is the FAMD, and that's the facilitated assessment of MTSS for the district, and the other one is the FAMS, and that's the facilitated assessment of MTSS for students. So these are our findings here, and, and the analysis of this. The district MTSS team needs to meet more regularly to ensure adequate communication and to monitor school-level implementation. We need to develop and communicate a strong core in behavior and social-emotional learning. Attendance is an area of ongoing concern, it has, as it has not adequately bounced back from the pandemic. We also have developed a differentiated PD plan for MTSS directed at certain cohorts of schools. Some schools are at a high level of implementation, others not so much. And we need to have evidence and research-based interventions at one hundred percent of schools and one hundred percent of areas. And when I'm talking about areas, I'm talking about academic attendance, behavioral, and social-emotional. The FAMS findings, like I mentioned earlier, some schools need more support and structures in place to fully implement MTSS. Alexander Central was one of those schools, and as you can see from his organizational chart, he's already working on that and got some strong structures in place. And this data will be presented as soon as the state board approves. When we look at attendance data, I had Becky, thank goodness, at the last minute, really helped me with this, but you can see that we took a dip in, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, did not come up all that much. So we have a district emphasis, if you've seen the work that Dr. Dal Revis has done on attendance and making that a focus. All of our schools intend to, I heard one principal say, we are at a grace of ten, and we're bringing that to a grace of five. We can still be empathetic to students, but we need to start requiring students to be at school then. It just got a little too relaxed. As far as the state of North Carolina, I could not find the overall attendance rates, and Becky could not either. I had emailed Stephanie DeShawby, but we did have them for seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. But if you can look at the next slide, we were able to look at chronic absenteeism, and if you, what you see in the bottom chart is Alexander County Schools, and that is broken apart by ethnicity. And the yellow, or the orange, no, not orange, red, with the arrow over it, is all students. So you can see the chronic absenteeism rate is somewhere around twenty-five percent. And then you, if you look at North Carolina for the same year, it is also around twenty-five percent. So we're not a whole lot different from the state, so that kind of tells me that the state hasn't quite bounced back. And chronic absenteeism is defined as students who miss ten percent or more of days, because it has been shown to have a, an extreme impact on student achievement. Okay, next slide, please. This is discipline data, and I know that this is a little bit small, but what I did was I tried to compare like comparisons, and it would be no surprise to you that when you look at per one thousand, it's our secondary schools that have the larger discipline issues for the most part. But what I did was highlight in orange the areas of concern that we're working on and that schools are addressing in their school improvement plan. So, the most important columns to me are the per one thousand. That number can be really misleading if you have a small school like AEC, where they might have thirty students. So if they have two discipline issues, that percentage is automatically so much higher than it would be in a larger school. Next slide. North Carolina teacher working condition survey, we're provided some data from the state, and before I talk with you a whole lot about this, I want to share with you that what we'll be looking at mostly is the district result, because this is the district comprehensive needs assessment. But I have one slide in there that shows you how, if one, two, or three schools really decline in an area, how it impacts us as a district, and how we dig deeper into that data for individual schools, and for our strategic plan to know what we can do to better mitigate some of that. Teacher working conditions are really critically important to teacher retention. Not just the money, but teacher, just retaining teachers, and I think we're, we're almost fully staffed. So we're, you'll hear more about that in close session. Okay, next slide, please. So if you look at this, you can see that this is the overall result of teacher working condition. And you can see that in the state, what the rate is, what the regional rate is, and where we fall in that comparison. So a little lower than we would like to be overall, but not far off. Next slide, please. This is the type of information that we get that we really dig into. And when you look at this graph, I won't show you this graph for every construct, but this is, I think, this is the overall slide. And what you're actually looking at there is anything that is eighty percent or above, is the teachers agreeing with what the construct was, which is a positive indication. So anything eighty percent or below, seventy-eight percent agreement overall was favorable working condition. You also have that line right there, which is the percentage. So if you're looking to the left, you can see that the positive change is on that other side of zero. So we have graphs like that for every school and every construct that we'll be talking about, but because this is the district assessment, we'll only be looking at the district results compared regionally. But I did want you to know that's available, and how deep we can go with that data. Next slide.
Sorry, hold on, sorry. I just wanna understand the change part a little better. But how is that responding? Is that someone saying that they feel that the changes are positive, or are they responding to changes, or they want change?
No, it's the change from two years ago.
Oh, the change in the data, okay.
Yeah, the change in percent of agreement from two years ago, when the survey was last taken. So, if it's on the positive side, more people are agreeing. So if you look at Alexander Central, you can see that change is really on the negative side, so they had maybe a tough year in the last year, just before they took this survey. But you will also see, and I hope that slide's not too misleading, I just want you to see, but some schools are really high that are low in this overall, but they might be very high in other areas. Okay? Next slide. So this is how our schools feel about time. Again, we had two or three schools that, you know, time was just not favorably reported. Seventy-two percent of our teachers agree that we use, or that they have time to do what they need to do. Again, most of the time, we're above the state average, and we're in the middle to low middle, and sometimes a little higher than the regional average. Okay, next slide, please. Facilities. You can see this is a strength for us, it's a little lower on the, on the pendulum. Next slide please. Community and family engagement. Now each one of these constructs is about eight or 10 questions. And so then they take the average of those and rate it. So it might be, are parents supportive at your school? It's one type of question that might be asked in that one. Next slide please. Managing student conduct. We had a rough year at two schools in particular this past year, and that really brought our county average down a little bit. Next slide please. Teacher leadership. Teachers having a voice on like their school improvement teams and things like that. Next slide. This is school level leadership. And of course, this is available if you want to spend more time looking at this. Next slide please. Professional development. And types of questions in this one are, is there follow-up on professional development? Do you have choice in professional development? And in all honesty, a lot of times this is a reflection on the state, which is why we look at it with a regional comparison. For example, the letters training, we haven't done a whole lot of PD of letters training and maintaining what we have going. Next slide please. Instructional support. Next slide. Okay, so this is one of the things that I know the board was particularly interested in, looking at teacher retention. And so this is the data from the North Carolina teacher working condition survey. Our 2022 per retention is 70. Alex and 78 in the region. So we're about four percentage points lower than the region. But certainly above the state. About the same amount looks like. Okay, next slide please. This is equity. And there are a lot of questions about harassment, perceived racism, prejudice. Are all students treated fairly at your school or are all staff members treated fairly at your school? Next slide please. Safety. Questions on this one are similar to, do you feel safe at your school? Next question. This is the teacher working condition summary by school, and I just want to draw a couple of notes there. The district overall was above the state and region, and 11 of the 12 schools were above the state and region. East Alexander Middle School, it's no secret they struggled, but I did want to note that they are trending upward. And so there has been improvement from the last teacher working condition survey. Next slide please. I did an analysis of the exit interviews, and I'll explain to you why this was a little bit difficult in a few minutes. But what we looked at is we had 128 people leaving during the last school year. And of those, 58 of them chose to do an exit interview because it's optional. They could email a link and they could choose to do it or not. Of those exit interviews, 27 of them were, or 27 were of the 128 that were retirees. And 13 of the retirees chose not to do one. So the table shows 45 actual responses from the following locations. So it shows where.
Chose to do one or chose not to do one?
13 chose, let's see, 58, 13 chose to do one.
Okay.
Because that would be 45 total.
Okay.
So that shows you the locations that they actually came from. The ones, the one that says multiple schools, that's somebody that's assigned to two different schools or three different schools. Next slide please. So when we look at the reasons for leaving, now this was, this was difficult because there are multiple questions. Like if you could change one thing, how satisfied were you? And so you had to kind of go in and discern what was the reason for folks leaving. So we've already decided on some things that we're going to change on the exit interview so that we can get a more clear indication of what was the primary reason for leaving. 13 of those responses were related to administration. Seven of them were at the elementary school level divided between four elementary schools. One was a middle school administration, two at the high school and three at central office. And at central office, it was spread between three departments. The other responses, we had 10 folks leaving education completely. We had eight folks that relocated. Some examples are a husband got a job in another county or somebody got married and moved to be closer to their new spouse. The other, there's seven that were, was a new job assignment or a promotion in another county. Six family obligations, things like I've decided to stay home with my children. But with those, I didn't, if there was some other reason that caused for them to want to stay home, I did not count it as wants to stay home. There were six that said family obligations, taking care of a parent, that's why I'm leaving, take care of my children. It's not worthwhile for me to teach. I have three children I'd have to pay or take childcare for. And at this point, I'd be bringing home $300 a month. Just not worth the aggravation, I can base it. So, and immediate supervisor, not the principal. So what that means is 13 that had concerns with the administration, principal, assistant principal, whatever, there were six others that had their immediate supervisor was their concern. So that could be in any department or, I guess it would be just maybe central office department. Okay, so next year, what we hope to do is we're going to start a new survey each year because I'm going to show you some slides that kind of graph the data since 2016 when we first started doing it. But in order to get that graph in a Google form, we'll have to do a new one each year. So that's something we've learned from doing this process. We've always looked at that, but doing a thematic analysis was never as important as it is in this day and age because of the transitions from district to district and all the changes that we're experiencing in education. So we're going to, can you go back please? We're going to start the new survey, I mentioned that one. We're going to encourage the completion of the exit interview. And then Dr. Chlor came up with a good idea while we were discussing this today. Maybe changing our resignation form to an electronic one that just asks one question about, why are you leaving Alexander County School? So that we can get a more simplistic answer. So that's good. But then when you start asking more questions, it becomes more convoluted and sometimes it's multiple reasons. So it's hard to discern what the primary reason is when you're, and to be able to report that data back out. Next slide please. So this is the information, how would you rate the quality of supervision that you receive from your school administration? This again is over the last, since June of 2016. Five is a really high positive remark saying it was superior. And one would be it was not good at all. So that's the average since 2016. So next year, hopefully if we ask this question, we'll be able to show you how 2022, 2023 compares to this data to see if we're trending in the right direction. Next slide please. How would you rate the level of support given to you by district administration? In 2016, until now. Next slide please. Please rate your total job experience at Alexander County School. Next slide please. We also tried to find out teacher and administrator supplements. I think one of the board members had, board members had asked for that information. It's not quite as simple as coming up with a percentage that we've been able to find. So what Sharon Mahaffey was able to provide for me and what I later found even on a different website was the teacher, the average teacher supplement as of April of 2022. So the average teacher supplement in Alexander County is quite high. So, do you have a question, Matt?
Can we back up for one second?
Sure.
Because we're hitting a lot of stuff fast and I'm loving it.
Okay.
I just think it needs to be said a little bit publicly because one of the things that happens is people leave the school. And they are free to say whatever they want to say and the other side is not. If we're clear on what I'm trying to get at. And the one way we can get at it is if there's a problem is through exit interviews. And so it's a little disturbing to me when people don't do an exit interview, but then go and complain because there's no way this body can ever see that. All we hear of it is rumor. And so I just wish that anybody listening that's out there in that world, there's a reason for the system and the system has to work and it doesn't work if I can't see. I can't help that problem if I don't know the problem. And it doesn't help when you just go and say it because now it doesn't. It's, sorry, y'all know I'm the habitat director. Sometimes people aren't in our program, they're free to go out in the public and say whatever they want. I can't say a word for why they're not in the program. It's the same way that it happens and the rumors don't really help. This would help.
This would help because it really gives us a point for improvement. And so now our point for improvement has to be a higher response rate.
Right.
And so, and to simplify it enough so that we can get to a direct reason without oversimplifying it so we don't understand the full context of the problem.
And maybe it is multi-contextual and I, and as you've said that, I'm sitting there going, I don't know. You lose some by going too simplistic, but you gain some by going simplistic. So it's kind of like, how do you balance that scale?
And maybe a question like, what is the major reason you had chosen to leave? You know, something like that.
And there are some people that might be upset and then they sometimes don't want to burn the bridge. So they say glowing things because, you know, they want to come back maybe someday.
Well, there are some people that are upset that, I'm sorry they're upset, but you were required to do something that you chose not to do and your administrator required.
So I'm just saying there's so much.
Context.
There's so much nuance to this. I just don't want to lose the nuance in what we're looking at.
So you can see that our teacher supplement is second highest. So we're doing a good job with our teacher supplement based on this information, and this is all I was able to pull. And that was April of 2022. We have what I understand to be a high administrator supplement or on the higher end, which is helping us in some recruitment efforts. We're kind of in a catch 22. When we promote from within, we create a vacancy. But when we hire from outside, then we're overlooking our qualified people. And so a lot of people that want to come here to us may be more qualified, but they only want to come for a higher position. And I for one really try to choose the best person for the job and always try to go from within when we can. So, and in every school, it's a different match fit. So we, Dr. Chlor found something from 2020 and she's going to keep working with Hank to find out the average supplements in other districts. But I did have a conversation with another HR director and I know that their supplement is like four or five points lower than our for administrators. So to me, getting that information out there would be a tremendous recruitment tool for administration. Next slide please. Dr. Chlor also provided this information and I just consolidated it a little bit so that it would fit on this slide. But she shared this with leadership last Monday. She had done some research to find out about signing bonuses. Alexander Avery, Davy, McDowell, Stokes, Watauga and, is that, Otava? Do not have a signing bonus. The other systems do, the ones listed below. It says how much their signing bonus is for staff and who is getting that bonus. So there are a couple of reasons that I want everybody to understand why we have not gone that route. First of all, we've done retention bonuses, which we, that's different than a recruitment bonus. But if you remember last year, we gave two retention bonuses. I think they were both in the amount of $1,000, thereabouts for instructional staff. What you do when you offer a recruitment bonus, and we're not a buzzed it, we absolutely have to, but if we offer new staff a recruitment bonus, what we're doing is dishonoring those folks that have been here all along.
I agree.
And so to me, I mean, there are times when it's very much appropriate. For example, with EC staff, but I feel like if we're going to offer it to attract people, we need to offer it to those that have been loyal employees with us. And that's the conversation that Dr. Hefner and I have had and Dr. Chlor and I have had is when do you do? So we offered retention bonuses, which is not out there publicized, but what this creates when people are offering recruitment bonuses is people jumping from county to county trying to snag that recruitment bonus. And then next year, they'll be back to us looking for a recruitment bonus and then they'll jump over to Wilkes because they're offering a recruitment bonus. So I wish we would come to some kind of shared understanding about what that looks like just because I'm not sure that it's the right thing to do for our existing staff.
I have a question.
Not from the floor.
No, you can certainly contact her.
Yes, please feel free to email me.
I was just wondering why the school system gets money from the state and the rest of the country.
Everybody gets the same proportion. Can you go to the next slide? Is that it?
That's it.
Ew, that was a bunch and I didn't even do student achievement data. Do you have any more questions of me? I think mostly, I just wanted to assure you that we do dig deep into this and I wanted to put out there the data that you have wanted to see and make sure that you had access to that. And we can certainly provide more individualized data to you in a private manner. The goal is never to make anybody look bad, but to be very transparent in what we're doing.
I got a couple of questions, if you don't mind. First of all, absenteeism, unless I missed it, you didn't really break it down by school level. Would you say the high school is still one of the areas that we struggle with emotional attendance? We used to talk about the chronic absenteeism.
Yes, probably. When you look at attendance rates by school, I would say that's true, but I think some things are really changing this year to shore that up. I do think it's families. We can, we can target those that are missing 10% of days or more and it's family unit. Like if a child has an attendance issue in elementary school, their sibling does in middle school or they still do in middle school, it's the same probably 40 children in the district that are chronically absent.
You know, one of the things, one of the things from working at the high school years ago there with attendance, it can be an issue, real issue. Are they looking at possibly with the teacher-made exams, doing exam exemptions? That used to be a real enticing, appealing thing to a student. Hey, if I don't miss the X amount of days and got such a grade, I can actually exempt out that exam. Is that, is that something? Because I know they went away from that personally because my son, I asked that question. Oh, you gotta go all every day? And so I was curious if, I mean, that used to work wonders.
From your mouth to Jacob Lail's ear.
Okay, there you go.
I don't know what they're doing this year. I think they stopped that because of COVID.
Okay.
Well, well, the days that they're not at school because they've been exempt from an exam, they're still counted absent.
I get that, but, but as far as, you know, you know where I'm headed. There's, you know, Miss Ling, we used to be at the high school, there's some of them will rack the days up. And if you've got an opportunity, hey, if you keep that grade up, X amount of days, you get you an early Christmas break.
And it does, we know they're out during the exam days, but those don't count against them for the exam. It does show that they're absent from school.
It'll probably show against us for the absentee.
It does for the system.
But I bet it wouldn't be more than what we're seeing. If you, if they could only miss four days and make a C or whatever it used to be, I don't remember. Well, that's four days, but then they're going to miss four with exams, that's eight days. And I would dare say that they're probably missing more than that if there's not a requirement for that exam.
I think that it's hard to really know where we're at because we're coming off COVID. And then even this year, at the beginning of the year, there was still a lot of COVID sickness. And so it became that, like Katie Nash said, Grace was at a 10, but we're going to bring it back down to a five. We can have empathy for kids and their family situations, but we have bent over backwards to accommodate students. And I think that's why some of the behavior things have, we've seen that rise because we've been more tolerant of homework of all sorts of issues. So we have some work to do, but I feel confident that schools are looking at their data and they've already shared that with Dr. Hefner and I from the end of the year. They'll have to present it again in the beginning of the year. And we meet with them three times per year to say, okay, you said you're going to do these research-based things to improve this outcome. How do you know you're on track to improve that outcome? And their budgets have to be aligned to it, their schedules have to be aligned to it. And I know Mr. Lail said he's going to be standing in the lobby every morning. And if kids walk in at five after eight, he's going to get them. He's going to get them. Then I'm tired of seeing three sport athletes walk in at five after eight. They need to have more self-discipline than that. So I think we'll see some changes because I think it's time. I think we have the data to support the changes and I think they realize how important it is.
And I also hope the court system, that they're able to re-engage after COVID and start taking out charges on the parents of the children who are chronically absent.
And I will say, we have no recourse. That's the issue. And we, I think we brought one family to court and that's a last resort. But that's, I mean, we have kids that went to school one day last year. You know, it's, what were they doing? They weren't involved in any other school. So, you know, but if you're not going to take them to court because you don't think that's the best option, then what are we going to do? Because it's held against us as a school system.
My other question was involving the exit interviews. How, you said you was going to explore ways to increase the participation. I like the thought of the electronic. What if you even streamlined it enough that they had to come to the central office? Uh, I like the thought of the electronic. What if you even streamlined it enough that they had to come to the central office and you provided a laptop or a Chromebook uh, and took care of all the processes? And one, if you actually put them down in front, because I'm just going to tell you from experience, when you leave, taking time maybe to fill out that form is one of the last things in your mind. So if you want that feedback, if you streamlined it, had it, hey, when you're finishing up, you gotta close this out on charge your insurance or whatever your benefits. At the same time, maybe give them the opportunity to sit down while you maybe get them for just a minute and maybe get that information right then, rather than send it to an email when they're getting everything packed up to get out.
The incentive we have with certified staff is they have to do a resignation. So it becomes part of our resignation because we won't release them to the next district. They can't sort insurance with the next district. We can't advertise that position. So I really liked that idea and I think we'll see participation rates coming up. I also think that it can't be a long survey. We need to really, you know, maybe some of it will self-populate. Like, you know, when you have your email, your school principal, you know, the things that we need to see, so.
I hope that some administrators take a point to uh, take a time for one-on-one, you know, also besides the computer. Get that opportunity for feedback, because uh, you know, uh, there's a lot of jobs to fill in everywhere in this area. Uh, and you know, I just, if somebody's leaving, if we got good folks leaving, just sit down and have a good conversation when we can. I know everybody's time is critical, but I hope we can find a way, not just for a forum, but some good one-on-one conversation, get some feedback. Uh, I hope everybody will start maybe thinking about taking a little time to do some of that too.
That, that, that's a good point, because that's exactly what I was getting ready to say is, you know, um, your good administrators will sit down with your people leaving and say, hey, you know, what's going on? What can I do to approve, uh, what can we do to improve? What, you know, what are, what's, what are we lacking in? Or, you know, if it's a, if it's, if it's that type of situation, so. There's a lot of probably little things that we can, we can all do that probably um, help this process along. I like that idea.
Concern I have is the, among several is the ten individuals who left education altogether. Now imagine the investment, the front-loaded investment, those, I don't know if they were administrators or teachers or what, but imagine four years of college at minimum. Some are probably board certified, some may even have their masters. But imagine that much investment of time, energy and resources in leaving the profession. And that, that's alarming to me.
That doesn't even include the retirees. That's just ten people, but of the fifty-eight, how many others left that just left the profession? And that's, that's the problem. I mean, you're, you're hearing it on the news, if you listen to the news every morning with the number of vacancies in the state of North Carolina. I mean, we are really, and, and we'll discuss more in closed session, we're really sitting pretty well.
We're not Charlotte. This morning they announced they have four hundred vacancies as of today.
And I think Durham had three hundred and sixty. And there's a classroom in, that I heard about right now that was, it's in a surrounding district where they have thirty-third graders in class. Our class size, we can still go high and set waiver and get waivers, but we haven't had to do that yet. So um, we're doing okay, because there is something to be said about being in a small school system and one with the supplement like our, and you know, sometimes the ones that we get add two. We've lost some good ones, but we're gaining some good ones. And, and a lot of times you know as well as I do, because you see those agendas, those personnel agendas, people leave us for a year and then they come back.
Right. Okay. Well, we certainly appreciate your uh, work and uh, if you would uh, at some point get with Mr. Warren and maybe y'all could have a conversation to answer his questions.
Sure, I'll talk to him right after, if that's okay.
Okay. At this time, man, thank you very much. This time we have a um, safety presentation by Dr. Chlor, Executive Director of Human Resources and Auxiliary Services.
That sounded the controller of the mouse. All right, so hello. Good evening, everybody. I do um, several different things. I'm not just HR, but I'm also over safety for the school district. And so I'm bringing my presentation to you tonight. Can you hear me okay by doing this? Um, to let you know a little bit more about what we do as a school system to ensure the safety for our staff and our students. Um, more school shootings and casualties have occurred during the two thousand twenty and twenty-one school year than any other year of data collection since it began. And the references there, there's been ninety-three at public and private schools, and that was just in that school year. And forty-three of those resulted in death. There is no one-size-fits-all model. And that's, a lot of times, um, we want to put ourselves in a box and say, if this happens, we're going to do this. If this happens, we're going to do this. And we have protocols for lots of different scenarios and situations. But no, nothing's going to be perfect when it comes to an emergency situation, as we know. Things can happen and sometimes we have to react or respond um, to what's going on at the moment. So um, we do have a safety model in place, but um, nothing's perfect. But we work hard to ensure that that model is in place. We have safety plans and, like I said, common things that we do for different. Um, I had also pulled teacher working condition survey information from this past spring survey. And this is from the district as a whole, how teachers feel about safety in our district. And so if, one of the first one says that they know what to do if there's an emergency. The second one, the school has a written plan that describes procedures to be performed, pre-performed in an active shooter situation. The third one says the school has a written plan that describes procedures to be performed for natural disasters. And then that fourth one, this school provides um, effective and ongoing training. And so you can see this part I'm really proud of, that in the agree column, we're way up there in the agree, amount of people who agree. Um, if you're looking at two-point-five percent disagree or one-point-four percent, that is just like a couple of people in the grand scheme. But I am very happy when I saw the results for safety for our district, that overall, I feel like our staff feels like we are safe and know what to do.
On the ones that disagree, did they elaborate any further on why they disagreed with it?
No, there, it's just a, a click for the answers. There's no option to type anything in. So going along with school safety, we have procedures, like I said, for our school staff. They are written in a step-by-step guide that should be in every room in every school building. It's an orange and blue flip chart. Um, so those are available for all staff and they're supposed to review those annually. Uh, we have fire escape and tornado shelter plans in place in every classroom, and that is by code. They have to be posted in every room in a school building. We have critical incident response kits in every school and those are updated regularly. Um, we have bus safety that needs to be discussed and required to be discussed with all students during that first week of school, so that they know what to do. Um, some, sometimes we walk them out to the buses, those who ride the buses, and actually show them how to evacuate school buses. We have the see something, say something anonymous tip line that we started, I want to say last year? The year before, all the years are running together. But that has been a success um, for our students to have a way to report things anonymous. Uh, we do safety meetings, or I do safety meetings and some of the principals attend that as well, along with Dr. Heffner, with uh, local law enforcement and emergency management. I schedule those meetings um, with those folks and create the agenda. And it's a time when we come together and we discuss all things safety related to the school system and how we can work together as a unified uh, group. And um, our exterior doors, this is a big deal and it's a big topic of conversation, especially with our most recent tragedies. They are to remain locked and closed every single day at all time. And one of the things that, that all school continually battle are people who want to take something and, and prompt door it because they just need to run out, get something real quick, or they've got somebody coming to bring something to the school. And so um, in a training that we had today, we talked about this again, and how important it is to make sure that all staff know to never, never prompt door it. They're closed for our safety. Um, all schools monitor visitors as they come to and from the school. And you'll see stickers on all of our doors, say visitors must report to the office. And that's because we have buzz-in, I call it a buzz-in system. I don't know what the term is, but we buzz people into the school after we see who it is and what they need uh, to come into the building for. That's another thing, uh, they have it placed. We have drills that we do all the time. Um, it's general statute that principals do monthly fire drills. The first drill has to be in the first five days of school. Um, likewise, we um, well, let me back up and say that we document those. And that documentation is a statute turned into the superintendent's office. So um, she and this what, maintain the records for that, to make sure that that's getting done and within the timeframe that it's supposed to be. We do, and you can call it lockdown or a code down. Different people call it different things, but essentially it's, we have a immediate threat and you're ready to lock in and, and get down. Um, so we have those drills. Um, we do one of those within the first couple of weeks at school. Each school is supposed to do their own. And then as a group with the emergency management team that I talked about earlier, we go around each school. We do what's called a safety walk and with that we couple it with a lockdown or a code down drill. Um, and that, that lets us analyze from the outside looking in, how that drill is performed. Are there things we need to change? Um, are there things that we need to recognize that are being done well? And we follow up with a report to the school principal, um, and the administrators with just the results of that drill. Um, what we do, um, is really comprehensive in that maintenance director goes with us and emergency management goes with us. We have law enforcement from the city and the county and myself. And so it's a great opportunity for everybody to see what happens in the event of a lockdown. We also do earthquake drills. It's something that we haven't always done uh, in schools, that we do those now. And that usually falls somewhere in the month of October. We have evacuation drills, shelter in place drills, and tornado drills. The first week of March is usually school um, weather prepared as much. And so the first week of March is usually when we do our statewide tornado. Everybody participates across the whole state. Um, we've had larger scale drills that we've done. Um, and COVID, you know, put a little pink in a couple of years here that we've wanted to do some, some drills, but we have had some things accomplished. We've planned with emergency management, law enforcement agencies and community members for these drills. And um, so we've, we've had a session where we were going to do an evacuation at high school with reunification. And that year, we went over to the church where we have our reunification plan set up for and walked through the whole thing. And really took lots of time, several days to tour the facility and decide who would go where, what we would do. So it was time well spent, that if we ever have to do that, we hope that it will be organized chaos, not just plain chaos. Um, but we also did a tabletop, tabletop drill last year. And that's where we all came together in the room and we went over a scenario. The scenario was that we had a tanker truck accident out here on sixteen in front of the high school. We had to do evacuating, but we also had to consider, okay, we can't really all just run out of the building because we've got chemicals. You know, there's, there was a lot of good information and discussion that came from that. Everybody thinks about lockdown drills being that, there are so many other scenarios. So um, when we planned this, I had asked for us to do a tanker truck, because it's something different. And we've got some really good feedback on that. We're going to be doing another drill this year. Um, we have our date scheduled, but we don't have the actual, we don't know what we're doing yet. We've got to plan that. Um, so in the last two days, we've had administrator training in this room with all of our principals, assistant principals and all of our directors. And we did instant command training, levels one hundred and seven, which helps us to learn that in the event of a big situation, who's in charge, what do we do, and how do we work together? And so there's some pictures around here, and Dr. Heffner's going to talk about that some more with us, of the training that we had. But it was a really great training, a good opportunity for everybody to get together and have conversation and learn from each other and figure things out together. Okay, so another part of our training was the school risk management plans. This is an online system, so most of you see it on your head. It's an online system, it's web-based, where every principal can log in and see all of their emergency plans for their school. It includes things like maps of the school, what would you do in the event of an airplane? What would you do in the event of, um, in my area, for example, a train derailment? It's tons of different situations. And so we have all of these plans fit in this system. We update it regularly and all enforcement, manage, emergency management can all access this system to help us in the event of something, make us see all of our. So we worked on that today some as well. And I tried to go really fast, but that's, that's an overview of what we do for safety in our school district. Um, and you can never be too cautious and never too prepared. So we're constantly learning, constantly training and constantly trying to communicate with our staff for what to do. Does anybody have any?
Any questions, Dr. Chlor?
I'm a, I'm a proponent of a school resource officer at every school. I mean, I have been for forever. Um, but I mean, I really feel good about our school system as a whole. I guess because one, for one reason, I've been inside looking out and I mean, obviously there's no way to say that something's not going to happen, but to be prepared is the best uh, avenue. And I, I just think we're, we are prepared and we can do better, obviously. But uh, I, I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. There's always room for improvement. Um, I was a principal for fourteen years. I've done a lot of lockdown drills from the inside, but being in my position now, from the outside looking in, our schools do an amazing job blocking our schools down. It's fast, it's efficient, people know what to do. I mean, we, I'm really proud of what we do to keep our kids safe.
I'd like to also comment, like Mr. Lattimer said, I, I for one also am a proponent that school resource officers at every campus. Uh, I do feel good, you, you're doing, the teachers, the staff, administrators, uh, doing their best to prepare. And uh, but uh, you know, I hope today comes with the resource officers at every school.
They all will, for sure.
Any other?
Uh, I, could you talk a little bit about, you had drills and I know there's probably pieces that you can't really talk too much about. But are you doing spot checks? Because like you mentioned in the very beginning, doors seem to be propped open doors. Complacency, things are okay, not, not at my school, that kind of stuff. And so drills that are organized fall in one category. Do we do unorganized stuff?
Yes, yes. And one of the things that I talk with the principals about, for example, fire drills. Don't schedule your fire drill the first Tuesday of every month at ten o'clock. Do it at different times, do it in the afternoon, do it in the morning. Make sure that people are, are knowing what to do at any time during the day. It's not an effective drill if we don't do surprise drills. Um, and as far as walking through the schools, Chris Campbell, I know that he's in the schools constantly. And we talk a lot about um, facilities and um, safety and things like that. So, and myself, if I'm in and out of the school, you know, we're constantly like, we'll walk by a door and push it open to make sure it'll close back on its own and securely lock. Little things like that that you don't think about are always, I know in his, in my mind, when we're walking through a school, but the principals do a monthly inspection where they're supposed to check all these things.
And we also pick up those lovely little blocks that you can actually wedge one open and we take those and we don't return them.
Thank you very much. And of course, we, we certainly appreciate the resource officers that we, we do have. There, there was a day in time where there were no resource officers in Alexander County schools, but uh, times they have changed. And uh, we have to be adaptive and resilient and, and um, appreciate the hard work of everybody. We're not immune to these events that we see on the news. And the sad thing about it is, it only takes a matter of seconds, seconds. And uh, but um, we will, we will remain vigilant. We will keep working towards the goal of uh, of course, engaging with the county commissioners, but also the state of North Carolina, because they've, 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 they've used a lot of federal dollars to fund construction and repairs and, and uh, but the topic of the day is uh, how do you fund uh, resource officer positions in schools on an ongoing basis? Not just a two-year window and then the local unit picks up the call. Not just a two-year window and then the local unit picks up the cost. But law enforcement has the same problem that uh school systems face, people leaving law enforcement. And um because of uh job pressures, uh inflation has certainly outpass outpaced any any uh incremental raises that either public safety or teachers have received. And you know, that it is what it is, but uh um we we don't need a two-year grant to fund a resource officer and then put that burden on Alexander County commissioners or um funding those um those local positions. We just uh, you know, I think there needs to be a a statewide approach to address this situation.
There there's also a a piece of this too, you know, you're not just paying an officer just to work in the school. You're paying for the car, the insurance, retirement, and by the way, you're paying them for ten months when a school resource officer is gonna work twelve months. He's not gonna be in the school but ten months. So you got a lot of different uh things to take uh, you know, consider, but um I think they need to work it out, and I think they've they spent money on other things that was let a lot less useless. And I think having a patrol car sitting out in the parking lot of a school is by far a better deterrent than any door lock, any camera, or anything else for that matter. And having an officer armed in a school is the best thing that we can do to try to uh, you know, mitigate the the tragedies that can happen. This is a very serious situation we've been talking about. We've been talking about it. It's tragic things that happen, and it seems like we don't, not us as a board, but society, we don't wanna talk about it until something bad happens. And then we'll talk about it for a few weeks and then it'll be over with. And you know, I I know we we need it, we need it desperately, and I think it's something that's far, far uh overdue. My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, uh we will um recognize uh respective committee members uh on the board to bring us uh some updated uh reports and information. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, Mr. Odom, thank you. Um I will speak just a minute from facilities. We met last week. Um we are um talking discussions on some of our projects that we've been discussing for a long time. Um the Sugarloaf project, of course, is at the top of that conversation. We're waiting on this grant opportunity. Um of course, we always feel like if there's a grant that's a high percentage of getting, we're gonna try to get that. So that's where we are with that project. We've got a lot of other things going on, as Mr. Campbell said. Uh our HV systems are very old. We're gonna have to reduce some repairs there, and we're we're trying to put all the pieces together for that. But Facilities is working very hard to get some stuff done as soon as possible, so that's our report.
Scott, was there any discussion um regarding Sugarloaf and the grant? Are we gonna do anything prior to the grant? Are we waiting completely on the grant? Was there any discussions about that?
Yes, we are right now, Bridget, we're waiting on the grant, hopefully by, I would hope before the end of this year, we would know if that's available or not. Um and I think we would move forward quickly if that, you know, footplate's gonna come through. If not, then we will discuss other options. I don't think Facilities wants to not do the project, no matter how what direction we have to go to do it, if that answers your question on that.
All right, thank you.
Uh I would ask this board to consider uh in unison at our um to coincide with the grant application, is what I'm referring to in unison, is if our next regular school board meeting, if we could compile a a a cost of the proposed projects, um so we could reach out to the Alexander County Commissioners, because every school building that has ever been built in Alexander County was built with local money, whether it's half-cent sales tax paying the debt service at Quinton Burn, Elldale, the auditorium, et cetera. Um but um at this point, there is no outstanding debt for for school buildings anywhere in the system.
Correct.
And some of these items, if we could just reach out to the commissioners and 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 ask them, because they're the ones that will have to go to the local government commission, and they'll have to um s- get their approval um to finance a school construction project renovation, whether it's and and Sugarloaf has certainly been at the top of our list, and we've addressed that in in two incremental phases. But but I think board member Ryan and the rest of this board, I think we're we would like to bring that to some some completion. But um that way, if we do not get the grant, we will have an answer, hopefully, from the uh Alexander County Board of Commissioners. You know, and let them let them know, so this is this is what our um administration and this is our um committee um stated needs in the community, because uh I I know s- quite a few people have been approached about Sugarloaf and um also the the football stadium, that's that's important. It's important that um the the admission paid at that gate helps fund all the rest of the sports at ACHS. And so the there's just some some big-ticket items that I think we need to uh QN the the Board of Commissioners. And uh half-cent sales tax has worked in years past to to pay paid for the auditorium, Ellendale, Wittenburn, et cetera. So if we could do that in unison, I would I would certainly appreciate the board's consideration uh next month.
Mr. Odom, I will I will work on that and present something to Facilities by the next meeting, have something.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Any other uh board members?
I have a education foundation committee meeting. Um we met on August the fourth, and our twenty twenty-two class, the Sports Hall of Fame Committee has selected that, and that will be announcing soon by Labor Day normally. Um some dates I'm gonna give you guys. Our halftime ceremony, the recognition that we do for the current members at the football game this year will be on August twenty-sixth, which is coming soon. So if you were there and you want to, um we're usually sitting on the fifty-yard line or somewhere thereabouts, you should come and join the the members there. They love to have people to talk with them and 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 I think they enjoy that that ceremony. We also have the Sports Hall of Fame Golf Tournament on October the twenty-ninth at Brushy, Brushy Mountain Golf Course. And that is, I believe it's a one o'clock tea time, twelve o'clock lunch. Uh so if you want to participate in that, let me know if you wanna be a host sponsor or know any host sponsors. We're always looking for those as well. Our Hall of Fame banquet will be on November the twenty-first. It is at the um ACHS Cafeteria and Auditorium, and that normally starts at six, and I believe that's correct. And also, I don't I'd like to advertise our grants, our teacher grants that we award in November. So for all the principals listening, please tell your staff now's the time to apply when they come back to school. And that is a five-hundred-dollar grant, up to five-hundred dollars to use in your classroom. We normally award ten of those, but last year we awarded twelve. So send them in. Um those, did we say September thirtieth, Dr. Heffner?
Yes, that's the deadline.
September thirtieth is the deadline, so please notify your all your school staff that uh those are, the time is now.
Thank you very much. Any other committee member? Okay, this time, uh we're excited to recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner, who is back. And uh we get to hear your superintendent's report this month, so we're we're thankful you're back with us.
Yes.
And wish you wish you a continued recovery.
Glad to be back. Thank you, Chairman Odom. Um at this time of the year, I'm going to talk about just some of our regular things. Uh the first being, we have our annual administrator leadership retreat. That is scheduled for next week, August fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth at ASU. All leaders in the system will be involved in this learning opportunity, and I just wanted to make you aware of that in the event you need to reach any of our administrators next week. The best way to do that would probably be through a cell phone. And uh my next item is about new teacher orientation. As soon as we get back from the retreat, the very next day, we're going to kick off teacher new teacher orientation on Thursday, August eighteenth, beginning at eight-thirty in this room. Chairman Odom will be providing a warm Alexander County welcome to the group, so thank you, Chairman Odom. Then uh one of my favorite days of the entire school year is opening session, and that is for all school system personnel. It's scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-third, beginning at nine in the auditorium. I would ask that school board members make every effort to attend the opening session, since it's going to be the first time we have been able to hold this meeting in person in two years. I know that I am really excited to see everybody in person, and everyone will be excited to see all of you. I received some great news, uh I believe at the end of June. Uh I was contacted that Josh Bowles, he is a CTE teacher at the high school, has been selected as one of fifty finalists for the two thousand twenty-two Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize for Teaching Excellence. The award honors excellent teaching in skilled trades education in U.S. public high schools. Josh is currently in the running for one of twenty prizes totaling one-point-two-five million dollars. And those awards will be made in October. Please join me in recognizing and celebrating Josh Bowles for the important work he does with students every day. And please cross your fingers that he is awarded one of those twenty prizes. I want you to see how our school and district leaders have spent the last two days. Dr. Clover, thank you for mentioning the safety training. We made the news last night, and sometimes it's not a good thing when you make the news. But last night's coverage with uh WCNC was very positive, and I'd like for you to watch the video clip that aired.
First thing though, we begin with school districts and first responders meeting ahead of the school year to prepare for a possible emergency in our area. Thank you for joining us here at five. I'm first from Sean.
Time to ask a recess. The school shooting at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas, of course, on the mind of many parents and students as they prepare for the new school year.
WCNC Charlotte Shamaria Morrison joins us live from Taylorsville Elementary in Alexander County to talk about safety plans. Shay, is the district doing anything differently this year?
Uh no, but what they have been able to do is actually apply for more funding from the state for additional SROs, and that funding came after the Uvalde shooting. And you know, today, school administrators and leaders spent the day with emergency management talking about who would be in charge if an incident like Uvalde happened here. Knowing who's in charge during a school emergency can save lives.
First ten minutes of any emergency scene is chaos. Uh so if we get, the earlier we can get the management set up through this command system, the quicker we can get control of the scene, from the last loss or save, ultimately, vulnerable, advanced, and planned.
Dozens of Alexander County school principals, school leaders, and administrators spent the day learning about emergency protocols and who's in charge.
It's always been a priority through fire drills and and different things within the school system, but after Columbine in nineteen ninety-nine, the game changed.
Now it's more critical than ever to know who to answer to.
We are all very passionate about what we do, and our schools are our priority. However, in the event of a lot of a large-scale event, uh we all have to know what our role is.
In the Uvalde school shooting, first responders and school personnel were criticized for not knowing who was in charge.
When you use the command, you use school security. So on and so forth. Have you been doing it all these years?
First responders here don't ever want that to happen.
And once the school system and the first responders come together, then we we work as a team to find out what best suits that incident and how we can deal with it to mitigate that process.
School shootings are not the only thing they're prepared for.
We have chemicals uh driving up down these roads every day. When I was a rec, and it could be some uh a pretty pretty bad significant chemical spill that may affect the school, and they would have to evacuate and things like that.
The principals here will bring back everything they learned to staff before the new year. You know, being prepared is a holistic approach. For example, doors like this one are locked at all times, all students are here, that's what the district tells us. In addition, you have to make sure you're either buzzed, dizzied, because some of the things they're doing to make sure that kids are safe. And live in Alexander County, Shamaria Morrison, Melissa. Hey, thank you for those updates.
Didn't Janelle Lingel do a great job? I want to also publicly thank Garrett Huffman, he's the Emergency Management Coordinator, and Mark Earl, the Fire Marshal. They worked with us uh for the past two days with this training, and just partnerships like that with county agencies. Those are vital to our school district's success, and the past two days have focused on safety, and uh that's just part of gearing up for a new school year. The last thing that I want to mention, I have attached an article entitled, "Dealing with Harassment and Threats Toward Local Government Officials and Employees." It is in your agenda. I would ask that you read it. The article was provided by the UNC School of Government, and it's a Coats Canon Law article. The UNC School of Government disseminates information about broad a broad range of legal issues affecting local governments and other public agencies in North Carolina. And the beautiful thing that they do, they can spell out things in what I term layman's terms, and it doesn't include all of the legal jargon that sometimes you see in state statutes and such. The article was published on July twenty-eighth, and it's very relevant for some of the mean-spirited personal attacks and criticisms that have become way too common, even in Alexander County. I know we have a board attorney, and we had to get her involved in a couple of situations. And I hope that you're going to read about the different avenues that public officials and employees may consider in response to various types of harassing or threatening behaviors. The the avenues that are expanded upon in the article would include blocking emails from particular senders, blocking users, or deleting comments on social media, civil defamation lawsuits, civil no-contact orders, and then, of course, the worst being potential criminal charges. So um it's good information, it's timely information, and like I said, it was released on July twenty-eighth, and that gives us time as we do prepare for a new school year. So do any of you have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll recognize Ms. Sharon Haffey, our Chief Financial Officer. Item five is um proposed Board of Education Policy Revisions First Reading.
Okay, we have um six policies that are up for sec- uh for second reading tonight. Five of those policies are related to policy development, and three policies were combined into policy twenty-four-ten of policy development. Uh I've received no comment on these policies and would a- ask for approval on second reading.
Move to approve.
And motion by board member Lattimer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by board member Bowman, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, item five. I was getting, I was one ahead of you there.
Okay, there are eight uh policies up for first reading tonight. Seven of those policies deal with the change in the title of policy twenty-four-ten. One change is simply updating the po- uh the Title IX Director after the retirement of Dr. Hilton. Because these are minor changes, I would like to ask for uh approval on first reading.
Okay.
Move to approve first reading.
Motion by board member Bowman, a second?
Second.
Second by board member Ryan, any discussion? All in favor?
I know that so- some of these are just, you're striking out a just a word or two in most of them, some of them. Uh sorry, sorry, Mr. Odom.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that did includes the proposed charter bus companies. And that did enclose the proposed charter bus companies for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, or are you going?
No, Chris Campbell's going to present that.
Okay.
John is suffering with some health issues.
Oh, no. Okay, Mr. Campbell, cameo performance.
It's me again, so I ain't not John McCurdy, but, um, on John's behalf, I would like, I'm asking for approval of the jo- charter bus companies that meet our requirement for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three year.
Okay.
Do you know if there's any new ones on here? Are they pretty much the same?
I think not.
Okay. I recognize a lot of the names.
I recognize a lot of them from last year, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure whether they're new.
That's fine.
Let the record state that this board of education has never boarded a, uh, charter bus or a fifteen-passenger van for a trip.
Is that a subtle?
Just some pointless information.
You're trying to get us to book a tour or something.
Could I get a motion regarding the proposed charter bus companies for twenty-two, twenty-three?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by board member Lattimer and the second by board member Robertson. Any discussion? All in favor of the new charter bus contract, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lots of. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a, a motion to enter into removal, to close session, uh, pursuant to General Statute one four-three dash three eighteen point one-one.
Same move.
No motion.
Second.
Sir, Ryan, second. Uh, Mr. Robinson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Share.